I'd like to call the Township of North Huntington Board of Commissioners's regular meeting for Wednesday, March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two at seven P. M. Roll call, Manager Turley.
Commissioner Stump?
Here.
Commissioner Atwood?
Here.
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Zona?
Here.
Commissioner Wengren?
Here.
Commissioner Goss?
Here.
Commissioner Higas?
Here. Could everyone please stand, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our opening prayer by Pastor Cole from Calvary Assembly Church?
To the flags of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight in Jesus' name. God, I thank you so much personally for the opportunity to pray tonight. God, to open this meeting with just an attitude of prayer. God, I pray for every leader that is seated across from me. God, I pray tonight that you just give them wisdom beyond their own comprehension. God, as they try to make decisions and as they answer questions and have comments, God, I just pray, God, that you give them wisdom. God, that you help them see solutions in light of maybe chaos. God, I pray that your presence is before all of them. God, I pray for discernment. God, if they have to make hard decisions, God, I pray just for strength for those decisions. God, I pray that you continue to protect and strengthen every single person that is leading this community. God, I pray for their families and loved ones. God, continue to protect them. God, continue to keep them healthy and strong. God, I thank you so much just for the opportunity to be a part of North Huntington Township. God, I thank you for just the incredible township and community that this is. God, I pray for every first responder, for every policeman, for every EMT. God, as they risk their lives for all of us daily, God, I just pray that you continue to protect them. God, strengthen them in the midst of them putting their lives on the line. God, I pray just for your presence to be here tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. If any residents would like to speak tonight, if you could please sign a book at the podium. Thank you. Our first resident is Roseanne. If you could come up to the podium and just state your name and address for the record, please.
Roseanne Barry Novotnak, two four nine one McCannon Road, North Huntington. Obviously, North Huntington. Usually have to spell McCannon and North Huntington. Good evening. Thank you for inviting me this evening. I'm here on behalf of the Norman Chamber of Commerce requesting that the Commissioners reconsider their succession from the Chamber. Your logo says that you're connected. Your banner says connected to community, business. We believe that we're a lot of that bridge between the community, the business, and the school district. I've brought with me the two thousand twenty-one Membership Directory Community Resource Guide. I'd like to share it with you. I know most of you know that the Township had been a member for thirty-three years, since nineteen eighty-eight, and I just came this evening to petition you in person. Any questions for me?
I don't unless any other board members do.
May I share my directories with you?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening. Let's be believing community unity. We hope you'll reconsider. Thank you.
Thanks. Our next resident is Juliana. You want to state your name and address for the record, please?
Julienne Farenbach, one two four six zero Longview Drive. And I'm just here to raise a concern with the Waste Management Pickup. We really haven't had too much issue with the weekly pickups, but my bigger concern is with yard waste. We don't have a large property, but we have a massive amount of leaves that congregate in our yard throughout the year. And so I contacted Waste Management last week to ask about that. They informed me that there's three weeks that we're looking at for the spring and for the fall to do like additional yard waste pickup. But the dates that they provided concerned me because our pickup, I mean, we literally had twenty-five bags of leaves that we put out last Thanksgiving, the week of Thanksgiving last year. But already this year, we've had probably about ten bags. And there's only two people in my household. Like, we don't produce a lot of trash to begin with, but it's becoming a real task trying to figure out how can we fit weekly garbage and then additional yard items. And I just, I don't know if there's an option to perhaps add something. I know there's other towns where you can get something at the municipal building, and I don't know if you would pay an additional fee for that. But if people need more than what is offered through that, and it's not something that I can justify paying for additional cans. I mean, twenty-five bags once a year, I'd have to have a lot more cans for that. So I don't know what our options are. I just am trying to understand if there's room for flexibility in the contract. How long are we committed to it? And, you know, are there modifications that we can possibly make to make it a little bit better and a little bit more manageable for residents?
Thanks.
Sure.
Response to Citizens Input. About the Norman's Chamber of Commerce, any response to that from the board?
I believe that was cut by Jeff whenever he was trying to find different places in the budget to cut so that we would not have to raise taxes on the citizens. That was one of the little drops of water in the ocean, so to say. And we are really marketing ourselves online right now.
Anything else from the board on the Chamber?
I would be interested in reconsidering it, but I would like some time to
All right.
just to look it over. Maybe we can discuss it next month. That would be my opinion.
Okay.
I agree with Ron.
I also agree with Ron. Roseanne, what is, is it a yearly cost?
It is. It's a year for membership and it's six hundred ninety dollars a year and it's based on the amount of employees that you have.
Wait, say that again, please.
It's six hundred ninety dollars a year. It's based on the amount of employees that you have because every member employed by North Huntington Township is actually a member of the Chamber of Commerce. Therefore eligible, their children, the scholarship application, the member-to-member discounts, et cetera. Every single person receiving paycheck from North Huntington Township is a member of the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm sorry. In addition to that, payments can also be made monthly. That would make life easier for you. That's not an issue for us. We actually do have a monthly payment plan that could automatically be taken from a credit card.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
About Waste Management, Mike, mistake me if I'm wrong, but for the spring and fall yard waste, that's not limited to the can, right? They can have that outside the can for that pickups, for the waste pickups?
Yeah, but I think what she was saying is that there's too much volume and it's not over a period of time that accommodates them. But this is not something, a complaint that we see much of. What we do see is, she alluded to Thanksgiving week. We recently just modified it so the October week was moved back to after Thanksgiving to accommodate that. So, but as far as the six weeks, that's the way it's been for many, many years. That's normal. Three in the spring and three in the, three in the fall. I don't know, the leaves in the spring were, we, I don't, we don't, in the fall, we have a lot of leaves, obviously. But I'm not aware we've had this in the spring before. It's usually other type of yard waste in the spring. But she's, I think she alluded to she has lots of trees and a lot of volume. So I don't, I mean, the contract's five years. It calls for six weeks of a yard waste collection. We're not going to change that too easily. It's not something we see a lot of, but I think, I think, I think the thing to do is if you could call the office tomorrow, Friday, and give your name and number, and we'll get in touch with Waste Management and see what, if anything, can be done. Because it sounds like you might have a bit of a, an outlier situation in terms of the I don't think we're going to be able to add weeks of collection on. But we'll just see what can be done. I'm not, can't answer it right now. I don't know. It's not something we normally see. We thought maybe we accommodated this leave issue by moving the last date back a little bit. It sounds like yours is almost throughout the year somehow, or more than is called, we're providing.
Yeah, I mean, we only have two trees on our property that are producing, and it's just kind of the way that the wind moves through our neighborhood. There's a lot of other trees, and so it is kind of an ongoing issue for us throughout the year. But like, we've had just a few extra bags that we put in our can. I tried last weekend. Today was the bulk pickup for our street, so I put them out on the ground. And I mean, I have to bag them. I can't just put them loose in my can because I have other trash. And so, but they didn't take anything. And that's kind of the issue that's arising.
It's not really a bulk item.
Yeah, I guess it's not enough for that. They just assumed it's extra trash, so they're not taking it off the ground.
Well, I would just say that automation is something we had to do, as we've discussed many times. But it creates some other issues. It's not a perfect system. It's just efficient, safer, and more economic, so on and so forth. But that, one of the things is the summertime grass cutting and yard, if you wanted to put it into carts. You know, the rest of the year, you might be able to accommodate in the carts. But if you're bagging your grass and putting it in carts, you're not, you're going to have to have a second cart service, even if you only need it for part of the year. So this is one of the things that I think is, is not ideal. But I think the answer to some of this with the grass is to, people should seriously be thinking about other ways to deal with it. Mulching their grass or other composting and other things to try to manage it, with the, think in those terms, too. So the automation is really limited to the carts. And this is something that we're expecting to see in the spring and summer is not accommodating bagging of grass as easily. So you need a second cart service, or you need to mulch your grass, or some other option.
Hey, Mike, can we look at possibly getting a dumpster down at Public Works for, just for different times of the year when there might be a high yard output like that?
Yeah, we could look, we could. It's, yeah, we could. There were some side issue with people going down there and dumping things.
Well, I would say like, at least you'd have to have some restraints on it. Maybe they would have to buy tags, or they would have to pay for something a little extra, and then they can bring bags down if they're tagged or something.
Well, that's something Waste Management wouldn't, we would have to manage it. We would pay to have an extra.
That would limit who's coming down there and who's, what kind of trash they're throwing in possibly to make sure that it's limited to yard waste.
How would we police that? That's not in down there.
Is there cameras down there?
Well, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have them around the building. It would be on the driveway, on the way in. Where the recyclable bin was or is still, where the Christmas tree collection is, it would be there. So we don't want them around the building. We have materials around the building and so on and so forth. So that would be there. So it would be difficult. It's possible. We may have to, we may have to follow up with her issues, see if that's solvable. And then follow up with some of these other things and see what the answers might be. We may end up having to provide, like with the case with the recycling, is we may have to enhance or have more facilities for cardboard to go to, one of the things we're seeing. And we're just watching it, seeing what design, this might be a similar situation. But I think it's less than ideal to have people taking things down to Public Works and dumping them regularly. But, but it's something that we could, we could look at. Especially, we realize this is going to be an issue for some people that want to continue to bag their grass. They're probably, if they have a large yard, they're probably going to have to get a second cart service for six dollars a month. If you want to throw your grass as garbage, with the trash. It's, 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 it's one of the less than ideal things with automation. There's some good things and there's some things that aren't as accommodating, just because of the type of system it is.
I think I'm concerned with the storm damage. We've had two really bad storms come through, which results in a lot of debris coming down. So if you could maybe ask Waste Management, or maybe we could consider like a leaf recycling or composting program.
Any other response to Citizens Input? Thank you. Approval meetings minutes for the special meeting two, ten, twenty-two?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero for the regular meeting two, sixteen, twenty-two?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Payment bills?
Motion to approve voucher number one three five nine three through voucher number one three six seven seven.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of approving, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Staff reports, Public Works report, Director Albert. Anything to add or report tonight?
I have nothing more to add.
Any questions for Public Works?
I absolutely disagree. And I'll tell you the reason why. You know, I am such a big advocate of having the people in the community contact us. I can tell you what's going on in Ormsby Drive. Why? I live there. But if something's going on your street, it is so imperative that you guys get involved. It really is. And I love when you get involved. It helps us understand what's going on, on your street, so we can argue for you or educate. Bottom line is, I got a phone call from Mr. Tim Morgan. He sat in this audience here, what, last month? And, you know, I went up, I met up with him. Lovely, lovely people over on Scotch Hill Road. They fed me. I got lunch. I'm not asking all of you to do that. I don't want you to do that, but it was really, really nice. And my point is this. It's so good for the Commissioners to get out to meet the people. That's what we're here for. Man, we are here for you to advocate on your behalf. Rich got his guys up there immediately, two of them. My wishes to them. They did great work. We had a water problem that was coming out onto the road because of a bump on the road left to us by, who was that? Who did the work on that?
It was one of the contractors, utility.
And what happened? It pushed water out onto the road. Well, you guys know it had been cold recently, and of course, it caused the road to ice up a little bit. So we've got a safety concern. I'm interested in the safety of everybody, as are all of my other constituents. I know that we are. We care about you guys. So we got Rich out there, and we got his crew guys came out, and you know what? Within less than one day, the situation was rectified. So kudos to folks who want to give us a call, get in touch with us and say, hey, I've got a situation, so we can come out and get your situation rectified. Can I get you some water? You okay?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. But Rich, beautiful job. Thanks. The guys did great work out there. Really super. Thank you so much for the quick response. Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else on Public Works?
Yes. Along those same lines, Rich, you and I had talked or maybe emailed about Colderville Road
Right.
pipes. I don't expect a resolution to that for this winter or this spring. But hopefully by next year, when it gets cold, we can have some solution.
Right. It's actually a simple solution for us to be able to go ahead and do some drainage work there. And it'll certainly, you know, we have it already on our list of projects to do. And it'll probably be later this year because, of course, now that the weather's warming up and it's not so much of a hazard.
Correct.
But it'll certainly be done before the next winter season.
Okay. Hold you to that.
Yeah, you can.
Thank you.
You know, an ongoing situation and needs to be resolved, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else on Public Works? Thank you, Director.
Oh, you're welcome.
Park and Recreation Report, Director Miller. Anything to add or report tonight?
Well, we're just excited that spring is right around the corner. We're very anxious to have the parks officially open on April the first, and certainly looking forward to see some familiar faces back out in the parks.
Thank you. Any questions on Park and Recreation? Thank you, Director Miller. Police Report, Chief Rizzo. Anything to add or report tonight?
Nothing to add.
Any questions for the chief tonight?
Yeah, not a question. I would just like to add, and I'd like to thank you, chief, and thank your guys. But I know we've discussed this numerous months in a row, the Attorney General Task Force, the Drug Task Force here in Westmoreland County. And the other day, I spoke with the agent from the Attorney General that is in charge of the task force. And he just gave me some stats here that I just wanted to go over because I think this is very important. In January of this year, the task force, again, this is the Attorney General, it's just Westmoreland County. So this is all of Westmoreland County. They made twenty drug arrests in January. They seized eighty-three thousand dollars, and they seized, which they took off the street, eleven guns. That was just in January. February, they made nineteen drug arrests. They seized forty-five thousand dollars, and they took fifteen guns off the street in February. So that's a total thirty-nine arrests, twenty-six guns taken off the street, and a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars that they seized, all because of drug activity. So I think that goes a long way to show what this, this task force is doing. That shows what teamwork, what all these officers working together can do. And again, that's not all in North Huntington, but that is in Westmoreland County. Now, if they're in, anywhere in Westmoreland County, it can end up in our township here. So if you would, for me, thank your officers that are on that task force. I will. And tell them what a great job they're doing. I check in with this agent here every week at least and find out what they're doing. And they're really, really pounding it and getting a lot of stuff off the street. And that's not even to mention all the drugs they got off the street. They got heroin, fentanyl, cocaine, crack, marijuana. They got everything. So you know what they're getting. I just wanted the public to know. So thank them and actually tell, give them my wishes to be safe out there, too, with all these guns that we know are out there, so.
I absolutely will. Yeah, the task force is operating at a high level right now. At the last chief's meeting, they were going over the numbers, and we're operating at a level that I have not seen. And I think it's getting noticed that they're doing some good stuff out there right now. And they're trying to get actually some more funding in to try to continue to operate at this high level, so it's good, it's good.
Yeah, and I think he told me that our, that our task force here in Westmoreland County leads the state in stats for, for these task forces through the Attorney General's office. So they are operating at a very high level right now. And again, I think that goes to show what working together can do, and the caliber of the officers that they choose for this, for these details, too. So, thank you.
We're moving in the right direction, for sure.
Any other questions for Police Report? Thank you, Chief Rizzo.
You're welcome.
Emergency Management Report, Coordinator Mahensky. I believe he's here tonight. Any questions on Emergency Management Report? Plan and Engineering, Director Fonzie. Any questions on the Fire Officials Report tonight? Subdivision Land Development?
Yes, I just have two items set for your approval tonight. The first is subdivision two of two thousand twenty-two, the Willow Estates Phase Two Revision Two, requesting board action to approve this proposed lot consolidation on Trafalgar Court.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
And second is subdivision three of two thousand twenty-two. This is the Road and Enterprises subdivision, requesting board action to approve proposed subdivision on Industry Boulevard.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven to zero.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Solicitors Report, Solicitor Alexander?
Thank you, Mr. President. There is one action item on the Solicitors Report for this month. It is action to adopt proposed ordinance number two of two thousand twenty-two of the Township of North Huntington, Westmoreland County, amending ordinance number seven sixty-five to provide for a zoning change of property owned by Bruce Hamilton. Said property being tax parcel number seven four dash zero six dash zero three dash zero dash one six five, wherein one point one acres currently zoned R dash one A shall be rezoned C dash one, residential one A to commercial one.
Motion to deny the request.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of motion to deny request, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes to deny request, seven to zero. Township Manager Report, Manager Turley.
First item is an action to approve the February check register.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
The second item is the February two thousand twenty-two budget report. Item three is a motion to approve a wage salary rate of fifteen dollars per hour for the summer employment program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Item four is a motion to approve the Act one seventy-two Volunteer Tax Credit List for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Item five is a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two milling and resurfacing contract to Liberoni Corporation for nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-two cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Item six is a motion to approve the bituminous reinforced seal coat and asphalt joint and crack sealing contract to Russell Standard Corporation for one hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All in favor by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Item seven is a motion to approve Resolution number one oh four of two thousand twenty-two, amending the two thousand twenty-two budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mike, would you please tell us what that motion, what that number one oh four is, please? So the public knows.
Yeah.
Did we read the resolution or just explain?
Just explain.
Just explain it. So we have a, we have a budget for the Liquid Fuels Program, which funds, funds the road program, most of it anyway. And when the bids came in, it was thirteen thousand, thirteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars over our budget amount. So we're modifying the budget by transferring funds from the prior year balance to accommodate that slight overage of the anticipated budget. So it increases budget by thirteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety to accommodate the road program bids that we recently received.
Thanks, Mike. Any other board discussion? All in favor by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Item eight is a motion to hire and extend a conditional offer to Andrew Carter to the vacant position of probationary police officer as identified by the NBOETC in Act fifty-seven of two thousand twenty, and he shall undergo a physical, a physical and psychological medical examination.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Manager Turley. Any further board comments?
I do have something. Um, I, I would like to just take a moment and recognize, um, we lost one of our own a few weeks ago, uh, retired North Huntington uh, police officer or corporal, uh, Bill Corey, uh, passed away. I, I know the family from, from school. Um, I can say that, um, he will be deeply missed and, uh, my condolences to his family. But whenever I did, uh, did stop at the funeral home and I saw him in his uniform laying there, just like I remembered him, except he was a little gray. But, you know, we, we'd have lost one of our own, um, condolences to the family and, uh, everybody that knew him.
Thanks. Any other further board comments?
Yes, I would like to, um, maybe, maybe it's a request, I guess, of, of the township, uh, Manager Turley. Seeing a feasibility of maybe picking about twenty big, um, businesses that are not in our township and maybe sending them a letter from the township showing what we have to offer and asking them to consider relocating a business here in our township. And I'm just picking that number out. I don't know. I don't want to make it something too overwhelming, but maybe if we start sending some letters out like that, just to some bigger businesses.
We can do that. We want to identify them. You, you, what we've done in the past, not in the last few months or so, but we've, we've did some economic analysis a few years back, understood what type of businesses were here, the related businesses and so, so on and so forth. To see the healthcare, expansion of healthcare and some of the things that are happening. So that was just to understand if we, who, who we might attract or who, we should know their business, you know, so, so, so what, 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 what ended up happening when we did our analysis on how we should work in this space. It was no, it was, it was not recommended that we go and just sort of contact businesses, particularly large businesses and chains because that's gonna be a lot of effort and very low, very low results. And it was told to us by several experts in the field that you're, you're, they have well-developed real estate departments. And the way that we've operated is leads come to us sometimes because they come to the planning department because they need to for approvals. Uh, and then we engage them that way. Sometimes they come through the county. A lot of times they'll come to the county and they filter down to us and we'll work with folks that we know are interested. And there's been a few of those. And sometimes we can't cite, we don't have a place for them. We can't cite, we can't get a location for them. And sometimes those, those don't come to your attention. Sometimes they're, they're quietly done. Uh, sometimes the regional organizations bring these to our attention too. So this is how we've sort of operated. That it comes to us. They contact us or through other development organizations. Uh, there's a number of ways that this happens. Sometimes it comes through our planning department too. So we haven't really engaged in the way that we're just ca- cold contacting people much, just because it was, we're advised not to do that. I'm not saying we can't do that. We could do that, but we should, maybe we should look at the type of businesses that we're interested in and contact some of them. And I'll give you some examples because sometimes, sometimes these, a lot of times these come to us through the developers. The developers are regularly engaged with these folks. You think about the development around Wal- the Art Parcels at Walmart come to mind right, right away. The way we've been operating is we work with a developer and they share with us some information on who is interested and what may happen. Sometimes it doesn't happen and sometimes it does. So we're aware of it and we're sort of trying to assist them in ways that we can. And so, so we, we, we haven't quite operated quite the way that you're suggesting is all I'm saying. And we've done it in ways that we've worked with the developers, the development community, regional organizations and so forth to, uh, get, really communicate and work with the ones that we know have some interest here.
Yeah, and I, I was just, just throwing it out there. I mean, instead of, and I see what you're saying and I know, like, I know the county sends a lot of things out showing what the county has to offer, but I just thought we're basically sitting waiting for them to come to us is what we're doing. I thought maybe be proactive and maybe just say, here's what we have to offer.
We could do that. A lot of ti- there, we're involved with the Pennsylvania Economic Development Association. And, uh, they've had various sessions at their functions on this. And they, 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 they have experts that work in this real estate area and locate places for businesses and they, they tell us that, they're looking at your website all the time. They want to make sure you have your tax rates and locations and things on there. So we, we, we've worked that air, that way too. Uh, we've been a little more progressive than others through promoting the community and so forth, but we have some things that hold us back. And some of the things that hold us back are really difficult things, having locations. Aside from the wo- part, ready to go development sites. Okay, you had the, the, uh, Wal-Mart Art Parcels. We've had some redevelopment happening. But a lot of the space is taken. So we're actually a little bit in. We have some new things happening, but we don't have a lot of places to, we've, we've failed sometimes in just not having a place to put folks that were interested. Uh, and, and, and we actually have some redevelopment happening in some parts of the township. The car dealerships have been really big at this too. It's been helpful to clean up Route Thirty through redevelopment and modernization of at least sections of it. Uh, so, so that's, the things that are holding us back have been really difficult to overcome. But at the end of the day, we look, we talk to folks, uh, the reg- regional development folks and we look at the real estate numbers monthly that come in on commercial, uh, developments and residential developments. And we're actually, uh, and some folks are a little envious of all the things that are happening here. So the overall picture is, I think, very good. But the, the, the things we have trouble with are things that are difficult to overcome and really have to, really need to be done by the private sector more so than us. So I'm just trying to give you a quick how we've been operating and why. We haven't done a lot of that, but there's nothing wrong with, uh, either putting things on our website and directing them to our website or actually sending letters to, we would, we would want to identify who the, which businesses would, we would want to, who's, for example, healthcare. We identify who it would be and then we would share with them our healthcare numbers now, which are pretty good. If you look at the growth of healthcare, uh, what's happening with Exella and, and what's happening in the community is very good, so. But like I said, I, 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 a lot of the folks that are interested, they, they, they already know this. They're working with people that are, they're looking at us. People are looking at us in healthcare and restaurants and so on and so forth too.
Okay.
Zach, I do have two things, Mr. President, if I may. So the Penswood Civic Association over in Ward Seven, that is on the far west end. This April ninth, next month, they're bringing back the food truck days. They're gonna have five vendors. Three of the men, vendors are gonna have meats, one's kettle corn and a brewing company. That's April ninth, Penswood Civic Association. That's a Saturday and it's from three P M. to seven P M. And they'll be doing that every other month for four months for the remainder of the year. That'll be April, June, August and October. The other thing, the other thing I'd like to bring up. So I talked to the VFW Post Commander Cory Bullock. The Viet, this is something very near and dear to me, man. Uh, the Vietnam Veterans Day Recognition. I can't say enough about them and all that they endured for thirteen years that this nation was at war from nineteen sixty-two to nineteen seventy-five. And I want to thank my brothers and sisters in arms that served during those years. And what they faced when they came back to this nation was nothing less than a travesty and how they were treated. So, that being said, the thirty-first of March this month, VFW Post seven eight one at the bottom of Jacktown Hill to the right. They're gonna have a Vietnam Veterans Recognition. All Vietnam veterans are welcomed. Please feel free to contact me or the VFW. My personal telephone number, area code four one two, nine zero one, seven six nine five. That's four one two, nine zero one, seven six nine five, or you can call the post, the VFW Post at area code eight, or, uh, area code seven two four, eight six three, one five, one five. We'd love to hear from you. We'd love to get you situated and we've got room for two hundred seats. Two hundred seats are available. And again, I just want to thank the Vietnam vets for all that they have done for all of us in this nation. God bless you and your families and welcome home, brothers and sisters. That's all I have.
Eric, what time is that recognition event at the VFW?
Wow, would you believe? Alright, in fact, thank you, thank you. Uh, I'll tell you what.
It's on a Thursday.
It is a Thursday. I don't know, but if everybody, and I hate, I've, I've never done this before. If everybody would stay in your seats, I can make a phone call right now to make sure everybody knows. It wouldn't take long. Would you please afford me that opportunity so we get the information on? Mr. President, may I?
I mean, yeah, if you want to call, we're, uh, I mean,
Do you mind?
we could still even have time and you could, uh, give that information next, next month for, uh, everybody.
I'm, I'm dialing Cory Bullock right now. You mind? I'm sorry. If he doesn't answer, I promise to get back to you, but my apologies. Cory, it's Eric. We're right in the middle of the meeting. Hey brother, I need to know what time on the thirty- two o'clock?
Yes.
Two o'clock?
Yes.
Alright, for all your military personnel, that's fourteen hundred hours. Thank you, Cory. Alright, brother. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other further board comments tonight?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Discussion. All in favor by state and I?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, meeting adjourned at seven forty-one. Board of Commissioners saw the executive session prior to the meeting talk about personnel matters.